Thank you, Brian. We've got one TV out. I don't know if that... we've got one that's up, but we've got one on the right that is out. And I wanted to remind everybody to use your microphones. I've had many, many people reach out to me about microphones. So if anyone comes up to the podium to speak, councilors, folks down in the front row, y'all will all remind, remember to use your microphones. But I want to welcome everybody to the meeting of December the 8th. And I will go ahead and call this meeting to order. And we are going to begin with an invocation from Mr. Seggers, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. If you'll please stand.
Father, we just thank you for this evening, Lord. And as we enter into the Christmas season after leaving, the Thanksgiving season, Father, Lord, I am truly grateful. Grateful for this city, grateful for the employees, grateful for my coworkers, grateful to this council and our mayor and our city manager. Father, I just ask that you use us tonight, Lord. And I ask that you just bless our efforts, Lord, and speak through us, Lord. Instruct us on what you have us to do, Lord, unify us, help us make good, clear, sound decisions. And, Lord, I just thank you for each and every person here. And I ask that you bless them during this holiday season. Watch after them and their families, Lord, bless them. And, Lord, we just thank you for your protection. We thank you for our great city. In the name of Jesus' name, oh, praise him.
Amen. You will face the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, Mr. Seggers with a roll call, please.
Yes, ma'am. Counsel Simmons.
Here.
Counsel Sims.
Here.
Counsel Lane.
Here.
Counsel Armstead.
Here.
And Mayor Andrews.
Here. So we have a full house. We had our minutes distributed to us from Mr. Seggers from our meeting on November the 24th. Any questions? If not, I entertain a motion to approve.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All right, I heard Counsel Sims with the motion. Was that Counsel Armstead with the second?
Yes.
All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Right, and that passes five to zero. Okay, so this is the first, I believe, appointment that we will make as a new council. And so we had interviews last week for a couple of different nights. We had some really great candidates. We say this every time, but we mean it every time. There's some really great candidates. And for those that don't get appointed tonight, we want to see them back and find another role for them to serve the city because we enjoyed meeting with each and every one of them. But tonight, we are going to appoint Keith Young as the BZA supernumerary. I'm sorry, we're going to vote to appoint Keith Young as the BZA supernumerary. So do I have a motion for that?
Motion to appoint Keith Young.
Second.
All right, I have a motion from Counsel Sims, and I heard Counsel Lane with the second. I'll start Counsel Simmons, but I'll go ahead and give it to Lane this time. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And that passes five to zero. So congratulations to Mr. Young. We have two additions to the agenda tonight. Number one is item number 021225, request for consideration of a crosswalk at Shades Road and Westover Drive intersection, brought to us from Amy Zari, our city engineer. And item number 061225, request to authorize the city manager to sign a contract with Sam Gaston. It's on the agenda as that. It's from Mr. Smith, the city manager, and myself. This is a resolution for the appointment of Sam Gaston, so I just want to make that distinction. Do I have a motion to approve the amended agenda?
Motion to approve the amended agenda, second.
All right, I had a motion from Counsel Armstead and a second from Counsel Simmons. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And that passes five to zero. We have no items on our consent agenda. And so we are going to move into, again, this is new for everybody here. So we've already done our first reading for the series of public hearings that we held on the 24th. And so we're going to go through those one by one. The first is item 011025. This was a public hearing that we held on November 24th, 2025, at 6:00 for consideration of an amended development plan for the proposed renovation and expansion of the existing Piggly Wiggly grocery store, brought to us from Mr. Smith and Shoal Engineering. We held that public hearing and closed that public hearing on the 24th and held discussion. Is there any further discussion that anyone wants to hold tonight on this item? I will just say I'm very much looking forward to, I will be voting yes, and very much looking forward to it. Does anyone have a motion for approval then?
Motion to approve.
Okay.
Second.
All right, I have a motion from Counsel Armstead with a second from Counsel Simmons. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes five to zero, and that is ordinance number 2960. Congratulations. Okay, next item is 021025, public hearing held on November 24th, 2025, at 6:00 p.m. that we held this two weeks ago, for consideration of rezoning the subject property at 1691 29th Court South from C1 Office Building District to I2 Institution, zoning classification consistent with other adjacent properties owned by Our Lady of Sorrow's Catholic Church, brought to us from Kale Smith and Chris Eckert from Supreme Engineering. We held this public hearing on the 24th and closed that public hearing and held discussion, had the first reading of the ordinance. Any further discussion on this item? If not, I will entertain a motion to approve.
Motion to approve 021025, second.
All right, I've got a motion from Counsel Simmons with a second from Counsel Lane. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes five to zero, and that is ordinance number 2961. Okay, moving on to 031025, public hearing held on November 24th. We held this one also two weeks ago for consideration of an amended development plan for Brookwood Village to permit the renovation of a portion of the mall as a site for new medical office shell space, as well as provision of additional parking for the adjacent Andrews Sports Medicine, brought to us from Kale Smith and Alex Patillo from Shoal Engineering. Again, we held this item, we held this public hearing on the 24th, closed it, and had the first reading of the ordinance. Is there any further discussion on this item? Again, I will point out that Mr. Armstead and I live across the street from this project, and we are, I am excited about it. So I would entertain a motion for approval.
Motion to approve 03 dot 1, 0 dot 25, excuse me, second.
All right, I had a motion from Counsel Armstead with a second from Counsel Simmons. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, that passes and is ordinance number 2962. Congratulations, guys. All right, next item, 041025. We also held a public hearing on November 24th, 2025, at 6:00 p.m. for consideration of a final development plan for the planned construction of a Valvoline instant oil change facility within the Green Springs Shopping Center, brought to us from Mr. Smith, as well as HFAAE. We had that public hearing, and we closed it on the 24th, and then we had the first reading on that. Is there any further discussion? I know we had some outstanding questions of you guys. We heard a little bit about it in our pre-council meeting. Is there anything else you wanted to add before we vote on this item? And if you will sign in with your name and address, and if you will speak into the microphone, thank you.
Yes, hello. I'm Garrett Small, the engineer of record with HFAAE. And specific questions that you guys had, we're looking at rotating that. I did take a good, close look at that. I'll start by, in order to get this to fit, we did go through planning council where we actually had to extend the property to get those parking, which allowed for emergency vehicle turnaround, the dumpster, and to have it oriented the way it was. By shifting it, we would have to do a road all around. The radiuses on that with the building are not something I feel comfortable or safe with to have that navigable around. It was also the dumpster enclosure access was not safe as well. And the final one, which this was one Valvoline is not interested in, there wasn't safe queuing of the cars to stack along that. They would actually loop around and block the access. So all around, not something that's recommended. Something that was also a request from you guys was to add landscaping and to help shield that. If we did move that sideways, it would extend further closer towards the road. And there is a big 66-inch storm drain line there. So that would reduce the capability to put in big canopy trees or overstorey trees in there. That would make me nervous being that close to the storm drain. So that extra footage allows us to put in there. What I did do is we changed the color of the doors to soften those. And I added some understorey trees, like some flowering dogwoods, to help fill in, to help shield and do some more, and ramped up some of the bushes as well.
Any questions? Mr. Lane?
Yes. The dumpster, it never came, I didn't understand where it was going to be placed to start with. Is it directly on the backside where it's?
Yes, counselor. It's on the backside, and it faces directly to the back of the property, so the...
It's not going to be seen from?
No, sir. Not at all.
Okay. And the second thing I was concerned about, thank you for trying on the rotating the building. I understand. That was a big request at the time. But as far as the landscaping, I noticed, I think y'all are putting azaleas, and you're putting the different shrubs. I think the photo that you showed us in the landscaping, is there a way to have the height a little bit higher? I know it's sort of like we've got a year, so to get where you want it to be, or where it needs to be by code. Is there any way we can make it bigger on the hedge?
On the hedges?
On the hedges itself. Because right now, you can, you'll be able to see right through there. I know it's going to, you're going to tighten it up. But I was just wondering, and can you go out a little bit further also?
The short answer is yes. I also did send some new renderings, which showed the increases of the bushes and the dogwoods in there. I don't know if we have a...
We did see some photo, or some illustrations in...
Yeah, I sent that to Brian, like, a few minutes ago. I'm not sure that Brian's got them yet. Internet seems to be moving slow.
Yeah, I haven't gotten them yet.
Not a problem.
I can continue to adjust, counselor, and add things on there to absolutely meet that request. Yes, sir.
Thank you.
I do have a question. Maybe it'll allow some time for that other image to come through. But could you speak some about the, you know, we talked about the garage bays facing Green Springs. Could you speak some about when they will be open versus when they will be closed? Like, will they be open only when cars are exiting the facility, or will they be open during business hours all day during the day?
That answer depends. I do have a representative from Valvoline who can answer that, so I make sure I get the correct answer.
This is allowed.
Yes, please, if you'll sign in and speak into the microphone. Thank you.
We do, in colder months, of course, they're open and closed whenever we bring a car in and out. During the summer months, they're typically left open. As we alluded to a while ago, the new doors are a black finish as opposed to a standard clear aluminum finish, which makes it a nicer presentation. If it came down to it, and, and, let me back up a little bit. One of the reasons we hear this a lot is they're concerned about noise coming out of the, coming out of the facility. We are very quiet. We're not like a garage. We don't do any mechanical work whatsoever. What you'll hear is somebody say, "Clear, pull in, pull out." That's really all you hear. We don't play music during the day, so it's a, we're very mindful of the neighborhood, very mindful of our, the position we're in the city. So, but if it came down to it, and we need to keep the doors closed while we do our operation, and open them, and we need to move cars through, we can do that. Keep in mind, we do a car about every 15 minutes when we, when we change oil. And we'll do 50 or 60 of those a day. So it may be less, less of an issue to leave them open, as it would be to up and down, and up and down, and up and down. But we could do that if it came down to it.
If you want to feel signed in, I'd like to answer, or elaborate a little bit on the noise. And I think I said this last time. I just want to reiterate that. The maintenance being done here is all preventative maintenance stuff, oil changes, filter changes, fluid changes, no changing of tires, no jacking up or any of that. There is a compressor that's used because the work is done in a basement, but it isn't a soundproof room on that, yeah, a compressor that allows the fluid to move and change.
Thank you. Brian, were you able to get those pictures?
He just came out here and took a screenshot of my computer. He has them now. He's probably about 30 seconds away from putting them up.
Okay, great. And that becomes an official proffer, right? That's like, okay, so that, so that is a proffer, the additional landscaping that we're discussing tonight, on top of what you proffered before?
Yes, ma'am. That's correct.
Perfect, thank you. Okay, perfect. Thank you. There we go.
Kale, were you also able to get the rendering I had of that as well? The color, that was the download attachment?
Yeah, I'm not sure that we got the, I'm not sure that Brian took a picture of the rendering. So these were the new doors?
Yes.
And then the last one was the plant material that we will use to make sure that it's all there?
And I added some of the smaller dogwood flowering trees there in the middle. You can see, trying to stick with the, well, not trying. I stuck with the code of 40 feet for the canopy trees, which are, I believe, maples that we, don't quote me on that. And then the dogwoods. And we added some larger bushes in there as well.
Winslow, do you have a question?
No, not specifically. I guess what I was, if I had a question, it would be, what would they need, when we're talking about additional landscaping, what would be the satisfactory amount of landscaping in addition to this? If they're going to make a proffer, does, it would be a proffer that doesn't really make sense unless we understand specifically what that need is?
I think a lot of it has to do with the height, how quick we can get to a height where it blocks a lot of the door. And also whether the shrubs itself, I heard you mention azaleas, somebody did. I don't know who did, but I heard that term. But it's something that can be more dense, where you won't be, how long will it take for it to fill in so we will not see the outside of it?
And that's what I relate to my registered landscape architect to change this. So this is far more dense than, well, the previous two that we did. But I can continue to work with the city.
Will they, will, your landscaper, will they present something on that?
If that's, I'd be happy.
I'm not, no, it'd be nice to see, but I'm, but I'm not going to hold up.
And that's why I provided the renderings to show what that is, at plan, versus more. And we can explore what it is for larger trees as well, from the cost and from an implementation standpoint. But I will say that typically, the smaller tree, depending on what you're doing, how enclosed the roots have come, you'll see those grow quicker than if you come and get a larger tree, because it'll take a while to root before then it grows.
No question.
Okay, no further questions? Do you have a motion?
This is a motion to approve 04 dot 1, 0 dot 25, is it?
Okay.
Second.
So I have a motion from Counsel Armstead with a second from Counsel Simmons. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, that passes five to zero. Thank you, guys. All right, that is ordinance number 2963. All right, let's see. Moving on to item 071125, request for permission to install a three-way stop at Waverly Drive and Avalon Road, brought to us from Amy Zari, our city engineer. We also held the first reading of this ordinance on November 24th. Any more discussion on this item? If not, I'll consider a motion for approval.
Motion to approve 071125.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right, so I have a motion from Counselor Sims with a second from Counsel Armstead. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes five to zero, and that is item, I'm sorry, that's ordinance 2964. All right, moving on to our next stop sign of the evening. Item number 091125, request for a stop sign at the Westover Drive approach at Shades Road intersection, also brought to us from Amy Zari. We also held the first reading of this item on November 24th. Any more discussion on this item? If not, I would consider a motion for approval.
Motion to approve 091125.
Second.
All right, I have a motion from Counsel Sims with a second from Counsel Simmons. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes five to zero, and that becomes ordinance number 2965. All right, next item, 121125, the recommendation for approval of accepting a bid from Infinity Tools LLC for the City of Homewood Fleet Maintenance Tools, brought to us from Amy Zari. We discussed this in our pre-council on November 24th. Any further discussion on this item? If not, I consider a motion for approval.
Motion to approve 121125.
Okay, motion from Counsel Simmons. Do I have a second?
Second.
All right, a second from Counsel Armstead. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, that passes five to zero. I'll go back to the start and see which, that is going to be resolution 25206. Okay. All right, let's see. So tonight, we're going to hear item 131125. And so we are going to consider unanimous consent. So we'll, I'm going to read the item, and then I'm going to have Mr. Jackson read the ordinance. And then, let's see, let's start with item number 131125, request for consideration of an ordinance to repeal Article 3 entitled Standing Committees of Council of Chapter 2 entitled Administration of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Homewood, brought to us from Keith Jackson, city attorney. We did hold discussion on this on November 24th. And so notice, nope, it's not a public hearing. Okay, Mr. Jackson, if you will, please read this item.
Yes, ma'am. Whereas the city has changed its form of government and no longer desires to utilize the committee system as identified in Article 3 of the Code of Ordinances, and whereas it is the desire of the city council that Article 3 entitled Standing Committees of Council of Chapter 2 entitled Administration of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Homewood be repealed. Now therefore be it ordained by the city council of the City of Homewood, Alabama, at a regular meeting duly assembled, a quorum being present as follows. Section 1, that the city council does by adoption of this ordinance repeal Article 3 entitled Standing Committees of Council of Chapter 2 entitled Administration of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Homewood. Section 2, that this ordinance shall become effective immediately upon its adoption by the city council.
Thank you very much. I would consider a motion for unanimous consent.
Make a motion bringing unanimous consent.
Second.
All right, let's see. I heard that from Counsel Sims for the motion. Was that Counsel Armstead? Counsel Lane for the second? Is that right? Counsel Lane for the second?
Yes.
Okay. All right, do we have a roll call vote, please, Mr. Seggers?
Yes, ma'am. Counsel Simmons?
Yes.
Counsel Sims?
Yes.
Counsel Lane?
Yes.
Counsel Armstead?
Yes.
Mayor Andrews?
Yes. And so we do have unanimous consent with a vote of five to zero. And so now, I would consider a motion for approval of the item.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Okay, I heard Counsel Sims with a motion, and Counsel Simmons with a second. I heard everybody for the second, but I'll take Counsel Simmons. Let's have a roll call vote, Mr. Seggers.
Yes, ma'am. Counsel Simmons?
Yes.
Counsel Sims?
Yes.
Counsel Lane?
Yes.
Counsel Armstead?
Yes.
Mayor Andrews?
Yes, and that passes five to zero, and that becomes ordinance number 2966. Okay, that's, all right, we are firmly in our new term now, really. We are, we are moving on. Okay. I can't even remember what it used to be like. I can't even remember. Okay, item number 151125, this is a request to authorize our city manager to sign a contract with Carr, Riggs, and Ingram, brought to us from Mr. Seggers, city clerk. We did hold discussion on this also on November 24th in our pre-council meeting. Does anyone have any other discussion items they'd like to bring up on this item? Okay, if not, I'll consider a motion to approve.
Motion to approve 151125.
I have a motion from Counsel Simmons. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second from Counsel Sims. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes five to zero, and that becomes resolution 25207. All right, let's see. Okay, other new business. All right, we've got a series of public hearings that we are going to be setting for January 26th. So I'm going to begin with item number 031225, a request to set a public hearing for consideration of condemnation of 1625 26th Avenue South, brought to us from our building official Wyatt Pugh. I am going to set that public hearing for January 26th, 2026. Wow. All right, next item is 041225, request to set a public hearing for consideration to approve an amended development plan for the proposed Homewood Community Church to permit the construction of a new two-story building comprised of a total of 30,797 square feet, as well as associated parking, landscaping, and other site improvements. Subject property is currently zoned GERD. And I am going to, and that is brought to us from Mr. Pugh, building official. I am going to also set that public hearing for January 26th, 2026. Next item is 051225, this is a request to set a public hearing for consideration to approve an amended development plan for Brookdale University to permit the proposed construction of a pickleball court, yay, on the south rear side of Brookdale Senior Living Facility on the site of an existing paved area. This is also brought to us from Mr. Pugh, building official. This is also going to be set for January 26th. And I do want to make mention that we will discuss this in pre-council on the 12th of January. So we are giving everybody a break, even though we will be here on the 22nd. We're not asking anyone to come on the 22nd. We will discuss in pre-council on January 12th, and those public hearings will be, for all three items, and those public hearings will be on January 26th. Okay, moving on to item 071225, request for consideration of approval of vouchers for a period of November 24th, 2025, through December 8th, 2025, brought to us from our chief of staff, J.J. Bishop. I do want to make a motion, a mention, we had a very lively discussion in our pre-council about the vouchers. From that discussion, Mr. Seggers has committed to scanning in our credit card statements from our credit cards that are issued for our next round of vouchers. So you will receive that on the Friday before the next Monday, so that will be in that same packet. We always have them in Kelly's little trolley of receipts, but this way, this will also be part of the packet that we receive from Kelly. So moving forward, you will get that information. I appreciate that item being brought to our attention to improve that process. Do I have a motion to approve those vouchers?
Motion approved.
All right, I have a motion from Counsel Lane. Do I have a second?
Second.
All right, I have a second from Counsel Simmons. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And that passes five to zero, and that is resolution 25208. Okay, and now we are going to move on to our two items that we added to our agenda, the first of which is 021225, request for consideration of a crosswalk at Shades Road and Westover Drive intersection, brought to us from Amy Zari, our city engineer. So again, this item, we heard in pre-council, we, without objection, we will consider unanimous consent tonight. And so let's start with a reading of our ordinance. And also, just I want to point out, this is a crosswalk for the stop sign that we've already approved earlier tonight. So with that, Mr. Jackson, if you will, please read the ordinance.
Yes, ma'am. Be it ordained by the city council of the City of Homewood as follows. Section 1, that the chief of police shall be directed to install a pedestrian crosswalk across Westover Drive at the intersection of Westover Drive and Shades Road. Section 2, that all drivers of motor vehicles as defined in the Highway Code of the State of Alabama shall yield to pedestrians located within the crosswalk as defined above. Section 3, that any person who shall violate any provision of this ordinance shall, upon conviction thereof, be punished under the provisions of Section 1.8 of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Homewood, adopted and approved by the city council and mayor of the city, or as the same, may here and after be amended. Section 4, that all ordinances or parts of ordinances contrary to the provision hereof are hereby repealed. Section 5, that if any part, provision, or section of this ordinance is declared unconstitutional or invalid by any court of competent jurisdiction, such holdings shall not affect any other part, provision, or section of this ordinance, not thereby affected. And Section 6, the provisions of this ordinance shall become effective immediately upon its passage and approval by the city council.
Thank you. Do I have a motion for unanimous consent?
Motion for unanimous consent?
Second.
All right, I have a motion from Counsel Sims with a second from Counsel Simmons. Can we have a roll call vote, please, Mr. Seggers?
Yes, ma'am. Counsel Simmons?
Yes.
Counsel Sims?
Yes.
Counsel Lane?
Yes.
Counsel Armstead?
Yes.
Mayor Andrews?
Yes, and that passes five to zero. Now, do I have a motion for approval?
Motion to approve?
Second.
All right, I have a motion from Counsel Sims with a second from Counsel Lane. Roll call vote, please, Mr. Seggers.
Yes, ma'am. Counsel Simmons?
Yes.
Counsel Sims?
Yes.
Counsel Lane?
Yes.
Counsel Armstead?
Yes.
Mayor Andrews?
Yes, and that passes five to zero, and that becomes, sorry, hang on, that becomes ordinance number 2967. Awesome, okay. Last, but dare I say, most exciting item of the evening, 061225, request to hire Sam Gaston. I'm sorry, request to appoint, request to approve the appointment? I'm sorry. Request to approve the appointment of Sam Gaston as special assistant to the city manager, brought to us from Mr. Smith and myself. Brought to us from Mr. Smith and myself, um, do I have a motion for approval?
Motion to approve?
Second.
All right, I had it, I had, I know, right, okay, uh, is it, uh, no, everyone approves, all right. Uh, I have a motion from Counsel Armstead, I have a second from Counselor Simmons, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those enthusiastically in favor, aye. That passes five to zero and that becomes resolution twenty-five two oh nine. Congratulations, Mr. Gaston, we will see you tomorrow. Yeah, congratulations to the City of Homewood, you are exactly right.
Hello, Homewood.
Okay, and that, uh, concludes our business, and so we will start down in Ward One.
Ward One, um, some exciting things are happening. I, I was not able to attend the tree lighting in, in Patriot Park, but, um, I heard that they had a very, very, very good time there and I hate I missed that opportunity. Um, also, um, I'm excited about the, uh, Christmas parade. Um, I, I think, you know, I, I've been, um, yeah, just excited about the Christmas parade and the Christmas spirit. I, I'm ready to get into that spirit and I think that'll, that'll be medicine for me. Um, also, um, I am excited also about, uh, hanging out with a bunch of third graders on Thursday. Um, I get to, uh, meet all the third graders at Hall Kent and we will discuss what I do as a counselor, uh, along with all the other roles here. Uh, hopefully I, I'll do a good job of explaining that. But, uh, I, I, I'll be honest, I, I, the last time I spoke with some kids, that was with Counselor Sims at, at the, um, at Kahava. And I think I learned more from them than we taught them, so I, that's what I'm looking forward to. Um, I, I think we've got a bright future here in Homewood if we can retain our kids as they grow. Um, um, it's an exciting thing, so I, I'm very excited about that opportunity, thank you.
All right, Counsel Sims?
Thanks, um, and just in reference to the holiday fun too, I think, um, West Homewood, actually, this Saturday, they're gonna have a holiday market, um, so that'll be one event to, to definitely check out. And on Sunday, December fourteenth, there's an event at Seeds too, so I hope to see y'all there. There's, uh, pictures with Santa, I think it's from ten to one or so, so definitely, definitely stay in touch with the city's Instagram, which is promoting a lot of these fun events going on. Uh, the one I wanted to highlight this evening for sure was December eighteenth is the manure lighting. Uh, start at five PM with lock keys and donuts in front of Track Shack and then the actual lighting itself will be at five-thirty on Thursday, December eighteenth. And of course, look forward to seeing everyone at the parade tomorrow.
Counsel Lane?
Well, I'm, can't be more excited about, I'm a hundred and ten percent for Sam.
Yeah.
I mean, I can't tell you how far back this goes and how, what it does for Homewood, and I'm so excited. I'm looking forward, hopefully for home, uh, for Sam as he comes in is to structure, uh, how would you put it? The, um, it's, um, I don't even know how to explain it, it's a, a congr- um, a comprehensive organization plan to where we have, all of our employees have a guideline and to shorten up places where we need to be shortened up and places that were overlapped that he can, with his professionalism, I think it's gonna bring great honor for Homewood. I'm just, I can't tell you how excited I am about this, I would give myself a standing ovation, these people, a standing ovation, everybody. Homewood needs it, I'm telling you, Kale, thank you. And, uh, going from there, I would like to, uh, look forward for the Christmas parade also. Uh, one thing I would like to, if people have gone down to Eighteenth Street, I would like y'all to go down, look at the sidewalks, look at what they've done, it's pressure washing, Ladder Forty-One has done one heck of a job cleaning up. Something I don't think's been done in Homewood, maybe since I've been here in fifty years, I don't know, but I'm just saying, it looks wonderful. And, uh, and I look forward for us to consider the other projects that are, you're gonna be seeing happening downtown. And, um, I, it, it makes, it, that's an exciting part. And also, the Santa Claus group, that I went through Roseland and, and coming down to Central Park, that group had a ball of a time and, uh, for a good cause and everything, so thank you to all the Santas who marched in that little, that, that function. And so I think that's it, and I'm looking forward to a very festive, festive holiday.
Counsel Armstead?
I guess first, uh, I guess I'll probably speak for you too, uh, Mayor Andrews and talking about, and probably for the City of Homewood for just there being positive movement at the Brookwood property. I think it's, uh, encouraging, so, um, I'm excited about, um, the progress that's being made there. Uh, also, piggly wiggly, I think everyone's excited about, uh, there being progress made there and, uh, we made some strides, uh, for that tonight. Uh, I think above all that, um, seeing all of you at the Christmas parade tomorrow. I think, uh, Counsel Simmons said he would be wearing shorts, if I remember that correctly. And, uh, so, uh, that, that will be interesting, um, for, for all of us, so, uh, look forward to seeing that, so, uh, thank you.
Okay, well, a couple of other events, uh, just to highlight, I wanna thank, I'm not sure if I mentioned this already, but the Rotary Trail, the, the Rotary Club with their trail at the Central Park, if you guys haven't checked that out yet. Um, that is just really, I can't remember if I mentioned that at the last meeting, I think they, it happened in between these two meetings, so check that out. So, yeah, it's gonna get bigger, exactly, my friend Rachel Dolins, uh, she had a great idea and she met up with the park board and, uh, off they went, and so it's already festive, but it, like you said, it's only gonna grow from here, so really cool. Uh, we had a great turnout at Coffee with Cops, um, was that last week? I mean, time is just in the time, in the time warp right now, it's so crazy. Um, and I wanna also say Kale and J.J. and I visited with the Lake Shore Foundation. Y'all, they have been in Homewood for one hundred years, I'm sorry, they've been here before Homewood was here. They have been, they are, this is their one-hundredth year, and Jeff Underwood was the CEO for thirty of those years. And so it was just such a powerful day and, uh, event, and they had, um, a wall that they have unveiled that's in the lobby of the Lake Shore Foundation that has a hundred years of their history. And, um, we just heard from the current CEO and, uh, board members and, um, it just was, what a, what a great, uh, we have so many great organizations in Homewood, so many great nonprofits in Homewood, and, um, we're so lucky to have them. And it's just such a, a special little kinda corner tucked back in there, so beautiful back in there and, um, really, um, just a very unique asset that we have. Speaking of nonprofits, um, so tomorrow night is the parade and the star lighting. Um, Patrick, if you guys remember, kinda started, uh, a tradition where he invited local business owners to come each year to light the star along with the mayor. Um, I was out on a run one morning with my husband and I had this light bulb moment that I wanted to kinda shake that up a little bit and invite local nonprofits. And so instead of local businesses, um, I wanted to include nonprofits. And so tomorrow night, joining us to light the star will be some families from the Bell Center for early intervention programs. So I'm really excited, one of my best friends is the programs director there, and, um, that place has meant a lot to my family. Um, my boys both went there when they were first diagnosed, um, with their hearing loss and I spent a lot of time with the Service Guild there, and I'm gonna probably cry again. Uh, this will be three out of four meetings now that I've cried. But I'm really excited to have Jeannie Colquitt and Jane Lamb and some Bell Center families there to help light the star tomorrow night. So make sure you look for those folks and say thank you, yeah, I'm really excited about that. Um, and I do not have anything else, so with that, we are adjourned.